I beg for your vote on November 4th. Thank you very much.
Next up with a two-minute introduction, incumbent County Commissioner District 2, Commissioner Frank Meeker.
Good evening. I've been here for a while and I can tell you that my opponent's new direction platform consists of a form, warm, and politically squishy statements designed to appeal for your vote. But the selling it takes chamber data out of context, twists the data to support a platform with no specifics demonstrated need. Worse, in order to pay for the platform, he shows no thought as to what impact the shipping of your tax dollars would have on mandated local government services. What he doesn't know or care to understand is that there are four things that are horribly wrong with this new direction that will come out of your pocketbook if implemented. One, his ideas duplicate programs that are already being successfully implemented. Two, his ideas are not one of the 25 core mandated services provided by state charter. To adopt his plan means I have to cut down the level of service in something else such as social programs or public safety. And the duplicative programs in his platform, if adopted without any reduction elsewhere, would force us to raise your taxes. So on jobs, we've watched executives with far greater pull than my opponent can muster come in with asking about jobs and talking about jobs for years from the Committee of 100 or Enterprise Flagler. I've been here long enough to remember them all. Been there, got the T-shirt. Even ITT couldn't bring in a sister company back in the old days. So don't be fooled by the same old political statement of "jobs, jobs, jobs," as I've heard it all before and so have you. It's not common for those who come out of big business to not understand that the county does not run like a Fortune 500 company. Why not? Well, one, we don't make a profit on your tax dollars. And two, the private sector can sell off divisions that are losing money. At the county, we must provide services like a jail, a sheriff, a clerk, the courts, and a host of others, all mandated by the charter, good economy or bad. Or we can follow the new direction, get taxed more, and lose the quality of life that brought us here in the first place. So tonight, listen carefully, think about the differences between the business side of a perception of local government and the real world where local government has to meet mandated needs of its citizens, rain or shine, good economy or bad, and keep your taxes low.
That's right. Okay. Next up, incumbent County Commissioner District 2, Frank Meeker. Moving on to District 4, we'll have an introduction with challenger from District 4, Denise Calderwood.
Hi, my name's Denise Calderwood and my email, for those of you who are interested in the Chambers document, is Denise underscore Calderwood at Yahoo dot com. So I noticed that today that that was a mistake. And then last week at a forum, you know, I didn't have a name tag. So I'm glad they have a name tag for me because I do exist. I'm a citizen of Flagler County. I have been a citizen here since 1974. I'm proud to say I'm a first-generation Palm Coaster. I have done community service since the day that I was in this community and I still believe in community service and that's why I'm running. I am not different. I'm here. I'm a citizen of Flagler County. I've been going door-to-door and I've been listening to the citizens. And I'm thankful that I didn't follow Howard because he had all of my statistics. So I'm glad he has the statistics and I'm glad he's following the statistics because all of you in this room need to have responsibility to understand how our community is and what issues we are truly facing and not hearing the same thing. And if I hear again, and I am frustrated, if I hear again that you don't know what the facts are, you don't understand, you know, how else am I to understand if we can't follow the facts that are on record? Okay? I live the facts. I'm underemployed. I started an entrepreneurial business. I have a consulting company. I've brought in 800, just a little bit more than $800,000 since I've been back to Flagler County. I am a grant writer and I'm proud of Flagler County and that's why I'm running. I'm offering my services free of charge to the citizens of Flagler County. I'm listening to the citizens. I'm going door-to-door and I have a vision for Flagler County. I'm the only candidate that's versatile. I was a county employee for the Sheriff's Department as well as the Flagler County Health Department and I've gone door-to-door in this neighborhood. I know the neighborhood. I know where Espinola is. I know where Daytona North is. I even know where Flagler Estates is in Hunter's Ridge. I've been all over this community and I know the issues facing us and I know the resources and how to get it together as long as we work together as a team. Thank you very much. And I'm Denise Calderwood, MBA, with Flagler County.
Next up with the District 4 introduction, two minutes, incumbent Republican Nate McLaughlin.
Thank you, David. My message to you this evening is simple. We need to continue to benefit from the momentum that we have created. This is the time to continue our efforts in core services, fiscal responsibility, economic development, and of course uphold the truth that Flagler County is a great place to live and work. Others have also taken notice. Forbes Magazine states that we are seventh-best place for business and careers. When Cireille votes with four plans, found it advantageous to consolidate, they found that the business environment in Flagler County was the right place to be. When Coastal Cloud, a leader in digital solutions, technology consulting, were considering a place to locate their headquarters, you guessed it, Flagler County is their new home. The expertise of our citizen-driven Economic Development Council has attracted five other new corporations to the county. These developments have meant hundreds of new employment opportunities and the need for new facilities to be constructed. While we are examining the accomplishments of the last four years, let's not overlook the progress of the Tourist Development Council. The TDC has refocused its efforts on a valuable market: sports. The attendance at sporting events has enjoyed an amazing upturn due to available promotional funding, resulting in an increase in hotel occupancy and restaurant and business patrons throughout the county. Let's not forget to mention improved water conditions, resulting in an increase in sanitary water for all of our citizens. In addition, we have been working diligently on infrastructure such as bridges, roads, parks, and walking paths throughout the community and in cooperation with all the municipalities. Improvements to the pier, roadway beautification, we even have a new covered bridge at Princess Place Park. We are building the foundation for a better community. Yes, we are, heading in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, next is the last one. The old Republican incumbent, Flagler County Commissioner District 4. Moving on to the first questions here, and the first one will go to incumbent Frank Meeker, District 2, and it's compound here. So what's your opinion of the county's current economic development plan and process and what new initiatives should the county pursue to attract new businesses and to create a more favorable environment for existing ones? Frank Meeker.
Well, let me answer the second part of that first because one of my big complaints about what we've been doing at the county is I don't think we're doing a good enough job of getting the word out on that we're doing a pretty good job. And the data that I want to talk about, well, let's talk about how data's played around with us because I'm, as a scientist person, all I do is I collect data, I analyze data, I make conclusions from data, and I move on from there. And this thing about, that we just heard about the 21% of people are unsatisfied with economic development efforts in Flagler County, that's right out of the Thrive Magazine's Chamber publication that talked about that Flagler is moving in the right direction. And I gotta put the microphone up a whole lot closer. Okay, got it. All right. So the 21% number comes out of the Thrive Magazine, Flagler's Moving in the Right Direction article. What's failed to be mentioned is that two years before, that number was 70%. 70% of the people surveyed said they were unsatisfied with economic development efforts in Flagler County. That goes back to the history of the Enterprise Flagler and the Committee of 100 and the haphazard efforts that were going on. Since that time, we've hired a professional. The Department of Economic Opportunity's been doing a great job and the number goes from 70 to 21, but that's not mentioned. Now let's talk about the successes that they're having, this making this economic process work here in Flagler County. I got seven new jobs, or sorry, seven new businesses coming in in six different business areas. We're talking about 145 jobs right now, ultimately moving up towards or will result in about 650. The average salary for these jobs is $40,000 to $60,000 a year. Our current average is, well, it used to be about 25, I think it's up to 32 now. And then if you look at the others, and I'm, we're gonna run out of time, but the median sales price is up 10.9%. Average sale price is up 15%. One of the 15 best housing markets in the next five years, Business Insider Magazine. Business tax receipts almost doubled from 2013. Taxable sales up 6.6%. Tourist development collections way up. We're moving in the right direction. The numbers show it.
That was Frank Meeker and his District 2 incumbent. On the Republican ticket, challenger, we're gonna hear from now with the same question. And that's what's your opinion of the county's current economic development plan and process? What new initiatives should the county pursue to attract new businesses and to create a more favorable environment for existing ones? It's up to you here, Howard Hawley.
I always worry when politicians want to turn the facts around. So here are the facts. 27% said they were satisfied. That's a fact. If I survey someone and I ask, 27% say they're happy with something, do I walk away and think everything is okay? How could I possibly do that? That's part of our problem. So yes, there were 70% of the people said that they were dissatisfied and that did go down because they went to neutral. Because we changed the question and asked the question differently. Folks, here are the facts. The facts are we have the second-largest unemployment. We can't talk about what we're doing when we have people who don't have jobs. We have 3,000 people in our county who don't have jobs. It has been like this for five years. That's what the facts tell us. So first, my action is I want our professional, who I agree she is the best person we've had, I wanna make sure she stays. I wanna make sure she has the resources to do what she has the knowledge and the intelligence to do. She doesn't have that today. I wanna make sure that we're agreed as board of county commissioners that this is an issue. We can't have this debate. We have gotta look at the facts and we've gotta agree we need to do a better job. We don't need to point fingers. We just need to be realistic about what's actually happening. And we have to think about the people whose lives are being impacted. All right? That's what our task is. That's what the challenge is. I wanna bring all of the key employers together from the private industry and others. I wanna bring an ad hoc group together. I have a series of specific actions that we're gonna make sure that everyone understands this is an important priority for this county and we will be the benchmark in how we turn it around. Thank you very much.
All right, now moving on to Nate McLaughlin, Denise Calderwood here. Question number two is, goes to Nate McLaughlin. You have two minutes and your opponent will have two minutes for comment.
Question one?
Pardon me?
Okay.
No, you don't get to answer a question.
Okay.
All right, well, here's question two, like it or not. Do you support tax abatement as a tool for economic development? Why or why not? Nate McLaughlin, two minutes.
Thank you. Great question. No, I do not. What we have developed in our economic development plan is to give rewards, not so much rewards, but reimbursements for training. We encourage companies, companies that are very...
Love the idea of getting with business people. Oh, wait a minute, we did. We had a big forum and a get-together. We invited all the business people. We recognize in our community that we have a lot of retired business leaders and we brought them together and that's what we call our Economic Development Council today.
It is made up of these citizens who are community leaders and business leaders and we're excited about that. We, there's a story of one company that wanted $2 million worth of funding or abatement or those kind of incentives a couple of years back and we turned them down. We just, our community doesn't have that kind of money. You have to be a solid company. You've got to come in ready to go to work. And this company was lured away with, from another community and turned, they got their $2 million from the other community and that business is not in business anymore and that $2 million has gone down the toilet. I'm not interested in those kind of deals. We're looking for real business, real jobs, for real people. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Now to challenger Denise Calderwood. Do you support tax abatement as a tool for economic development? Why or why not?
Yes, actually I do and it is one tool amongst many tax, different economic development tools that Flagler County and the state of Florida and also the federal government offer counties like us that we do not tap into. Our county historically stayed at Enterprise Flagler. I was at all those community meetings and we had the same businesses that, at those meetings that we had at the last Economic Opportunity Council get-together that I attended this time. We have the same assets that we've had then. We have a little bit more, but we don't have enough. What we don't have is Flagler County reaching out to the state and asking for some subsidies that were, that are available to us. We're a ready community. We can do dollar-for-dollar match on grants when most states, or most counties have to do $2 for $1, but yet in our county commission, we can't even get the matching dollars that we need to apply for those tax incentive programs. We have Volusia County next to us that just brought in Trader Joe's by using a tax abatement program and they're gonna be hiring just about 1,000 people. So hopefully some of those people from Flagler County who are unemployed are going to be going, taking advantage of that. But again, they will be joining the group of Flagler County residents that have to leave our beautiful community every day and travel the roads to Jacksonville or Orlando for jobs because we do not have the jobs here for the population that we have here. And we cannot afford to live on the service economy rate of employment that we have. So yes, there's plenty of tools for economic development and we need to use as many as possible and have an open mind about different opportunities and reach out for help. As the only person who's a registered lobbyist for the state of Florida, I know how to do those kinds of things and I'm not afraid to ask for help. I've reached out as a small business owner and gone to Tallahassee on my own dime when I'm underemployed, when I'm, you know, going out there speaking on behalf of our community and saying how great it is. I'm sorry that I'm the only one or a few of us who are rebels enough to speak out. Thank you.
Denise Calderwood. Question number three, as we're talking with the Flagler County Commission candidates here, question number three goes to Howard Hawley. And do you believe Flagler County should have a fixed route transit system? If no, why? If yes, what would you like it to look like and how would you fund it? Howard Hawley.
I recently attended the Citizens Academy and spent a few weeks trying to make sure I understood how the county runs and what I could learn. And when the transportation director came, I asked this question. Do you know how our citizens feel about the transportation? And she said absolutely. And here's what we're doing about it. So I felt pretty good that at least there was a plan. And there needs to be a hub-and-spoke system in our city and in our county for transportation. And we need to have a multi-size set of vehicles available to us based on getting down some of the streets and coming out to some of our major thoroughfares. That's the plan. We have to work to get it funded. And one of the things that I would agree with my opponent on is sometimes we just don't get the information out. But I think we've gotta get this out and everyone needs to get their fingerprints on it, using one of my old terms. Everyone has to say, yes, this is what I want. Yes, this is what I need to solve the problem that we have. And this is a problem. As we begin to fix our economy and bring in new businesses, this is a solution that we have got to find. None of this is gonna be quick, folks. I'm not suggesting we're gonna elect, make an election today and all of a sudden start and solve something that's been intractable and has taken years. But I do tell you that it can be done. It has been done. What attracts us all here are the investments and decisions that were made years and decades ago to create this wonderful place, this wonderful magnet. We can create a similar magnet on the economic side and transportation is a big piece of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard Hawley. Now, Frank Meeker has one minute to respond. So Frank Meeker, take it away. You have one minute.
Well, I don't think we're there yet. We just reached 100,000 people. Palm Coast is the largest density area within Flagler County and even the city of Palm Coast, the city council in Palm Coast has looked at this issue over and over and decided that Palm Coast just isn't sufficiently stabilized and sufficiently organized and sufficiently transportation-oriented to warrant a major rapid transit system within the city. Part of the problem is there's no place as a collection site. And second is that it's inefficient in Palm Coast to be driving buses from corner to corner trying to pick up people at each individual stop. So the only way for it to work efficiently was to pull people out of their homes, which puts them back on the road in the first place, get them to a shopping center, drop off their cars, jump on a bus, and then go around from there. That's just not the way to do an efficient rapid transit system.
Thank you, Frank Meeker. Moving on to question number four. As surveys and plans progress for beach re-nourishment, do you believe this is a local issue? If so, how will you bring the necessary budgetary dollars to the table? And this question goes for two minutes, Denise Calderwood.
Beach re-nourishment is actually a federal, state, and local issue and it's an issue that's gonna take all of us to come up with creative approaches to solving, just like all the other issues we're talking about: unemployment, transportation. You know, the beach, it should be our priority. It's why people come to Flagler County as well. It's our tourist attraction. We do have, you know, people staying at the beach. We have the tourist development dollars. They can be used as a catalyst, but it also can be used as match dollars to bring in the federal support that we need as long as we are coming up with a plan that we can agree on. And maybe not just the one plan from, you know, the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers, but several different types of plans and ideas. We can use the beach. We have a lot of miles of beach in Flagler County and we can try different entrepreneurial approaches. We do have a very small local startup company here that does beach erosion and control and they've had success across, in other parts of the United States and they're right here in Flagler County. They haven't been asked to come to the table or even presented any ideas because we probably don't even know that they're here. It's something I've found recently. So yes, it is an issue. It's something that I believe in. I love the beach. If I had the resources, I'd be living on the beach. But I'm gonna head west, you know, when I get elected as Flagler County Commissioner and I will still go to the beach because it's close by and that's why I moved back to our great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise Calderwood. And now Nate McLaughlin, incumbent County Commissioner, has one minute to rebut.
Okay, real quickly, when folks tell you that giving tax breaks to corporations is a good idea, remember this, that that burden has to come back on you. That's why I don't want that. And as far as the beach re-nourishment, we have identified our funding. It is federal, state, and local. We have done the engineering. We do have the plan in place and beach re-nourishment will go forward. Thank you.
Nate McLaughlin, moving on to question number five, Flagler County Commissioners. And this first question goes to Frank Meeker. The county commission recently identified three legislative priorities. If you could add a business-related priority to this list, what would it be and why? Frank Meeker.
Well, it's an interesting question. I've been focusing most of my time on the Malacombra drainage issue. So if I had to pick an area that I'd like to see us focus on economic development as a legislative priority for business, I need more assistance in building our grant program up. Right now, what we focus on is businesses that have skin in the game and they also have to have performance-based incentives coming in from us. So I only am going to offer financial incentives to those businesses that are capable of promising that they will produce X number of jobs in such amount of time. If those jobs are produced, they get the incentive. If they don't produce those number of jobs, they don't get the incentive. That's what a performance-based incentive is. And, you know, again, as a smaller county, even though Palm Coast is the second-largest county in the region, Flagler County is still not, not a large county by any means at 100,000. So I could use some additional funding coming in to do some other grants, maybe offset some of the building costs, getting the pad ready cost up there. I could use some help with the infrastructure improvements. I'm already making considerable improvements at my airport. I spent $2.1 million in a grant there just to build a new road. That's gonna open up the entire south end of the airport, the entire north end of the airport. Every building is already rented out there. I'm already done. So I need to expand my airport, which is the only industrial opportunity that I've got in the county. Everything else is in private ownership, whether I'm talking Hargrove Grade or the Pine Lakes Industrial Park, that's all privately owned. So the only thing I can really control from an industrial standpoint is my airport. So that's where I like to focus my money on. More grants, more opportunities there.
Thank you, Frank Meeker. And challenger Howard Hawley has one minute for rebuttal.
The first thing I'm gonna do is get the airport back to you. So here is what we should've had on those legislative priorities. What we know is that we have people who have skills that don't match the jobs that we have available. We have businesses who have jobs and they can't fill them. So the first thing that I would look to is to the state, with of course us doing it as well from a county perspective, to really help on things like internships, on inventory and where we are. Career Source is currently doing that. Daytona State College, Flagler Schools. What we need, folks, is leadership from the board of county commissioners. We've got everybody trying to work on it, but we lack leadership. So what we wanna do is we wanna ask for specific state support with regards to fixing the skill and job match. We do that quickly, that can drive unemployment down rather quickly. Thank you.
First to Nate McLaughlin, first of state funding doesn't materialize for Malacombra, how do you believe the county should address this issue?
Well, we need to move forward on the Malacombra issue. We have identified some local funding and we already have identified some state funding. The key to that is there's just no way that this community is gonna be able to absorb the costs of making that right in Malacombra, the drainage. This is a 40, 50-year-old problem that's been kicked down the road too many times. We're tackling that problem now. We will continue to go back to the state as they should offer us the help that we need on that. So the answer to that is how should we address the issue? If they don't give it to us, go back until they do. Thank you.
Okay, Nate McLaughlin. And one minute for rebuttal, Denise Calderwood.
Well, first of all, I don't think it's gonna materialize because we haven't pulled any permits yet for the Malacombra drainage issue and just like we haven't for years, that issue's been going on and has been kicked down, kicked down the road and it's also been planned over and over again. I used to live there. I've lived the issue. I know the people in Daytona North have the same issue. I don't know how we're going to be addressing the issue when we don't have anybody writing budgets on a full-time basis on behalf of our county. Even the city of Benell had a full-time grant writer for three, three years and they were able to pull in money. So we talk about it. We say we're doing it, but we don't necessarily follow through on a consistent basis. And I agree with Howard Hawley that we do need to have new leadership and we need to have a person who has a vision and has the energy and the vibrancy and the versatility to actually get it done, who lived that issue, who was a homeowner in that neighborhood and was successfully, by the skin of my teeth, be able to sell a house when the flooding was right next door to my property on Central Avenue with the frogs glaring. So I mean, it is an issue. It has been an issue and it needs leadership and not willies in Flagler County. Wellington boots. Thank you.
Denise Calderwood, and this challenger to Nate McLaughlin. Moving on to question number seven, this goes to Howard Hawley. The recent business retention and expansion survey conducted by the Flagler County Department of Economic Development and the Chamber identified most important issues for Flagler's agricultural business. Which issue do you feel should garner the most attention from the county? Howard Hawley.
Well, first of all, worked with Mark Warren of the Agricultural Extension to do that study and I believe he did an excellent job. We presented it back to the BOCC and now there are ongoing efforts to outline the next steps. One of the things that I think is very clear is agriculture is a very important part of our economy and we wanna give that a lot more visibility than we have in the past. We also want to bring our farmers in. We want to make sure that all of our citizens understand the key role that our farmers, our cattleman, and that agriculture is playing in our economy. So when I talk about economic growth, I'm talking about commercial, industrial, and agricultural growth. And I believe that the work that's being done by the Chamber is absolutely moving us in the right direction. Inclusion, engagement, communication, those are the actions that we need to take and that we will take.
And one minute for comment or rebuttal, Frank Meeker.
Well, surprise, I actually don't have any problems with anything that my opponent said on that. I agree with him. The agricultural community in Flagler has been historically one of the important business-driving feature in Flagler County for years. It should continue to be the feature-driving component for years. There's two things that they could use some help on. They need some improvements to their drainage system as well and they also need to know that their allocation of water that they need is gonna be there, which, and in order to do that, they have to work with Water Management District, of course, but we have to make sure that that, that resource that we're gonna use, which is only 90 feet deep, is, is not gonna be overpumped, overtaxed to the point where when they need groundwater resources, they can't get it. So focus on protecting the groundwater resources and expand the drainage system so that they can grow the crops.
Thank you. Denise Calderwood, question eight's for you. The current population of Flagler County is nearly 100,000. What is your 20-year vision, how Flagler will grow or not grow?
Well, I, well, 20 years is a little far. Hopefully we'll have a seniors center by then and I will be attending it. Hopefully not in a wheelchair. I'm sorry about that. I had a 20-year vision for Flagler County and it's come true to where it is now. I had a 20-year vision for Flagler County and it's come true to where it is now. I put a youth center in a retirement community. It's still thriving to this day. So I'm thankful for those people in the community who've stepped forward with that vision when I was talking about it then in a retirement community. Flagler County will grow. We have the space. I mean, ITT did fantastic planning. They even included industrial parks. We have the space. What we don't have is the infrastructure and the willingness to help businesses actually relocate here because we don't have effective tax abatement programs. So those are things that we should use responsibly. We have a brownfields grant and most of the businesses that I've gone door-to-door with and contacted those owners don't even know that we have $700,000 available to help them look at underdeveloped and unutilized properties and fix them up and clean them up and reuse them, like the old Benel Hospital, the first one that we've had in town that's been vacant for over 35 years. So my vision does not include any abandoned buildings or abandoned houses that we have on every street corner. I've been to just under 8,000 houses in Flagler County knocking on doors and every street that I've attended had an abandoned house, at least one on record. So that tells us something, people. We have to wake up, smell the roses, and know that our vision is brighter for the future as long as we work together. Now that we're a metropolitan statistical area, we have the resources. We have the data. You can't hide from it anymore. And we need to take that data and run with it and go forward in an aggressive manner. And that's what I offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. Nate McLaughlin, you've got one minute for a comment or rebuttal.
Thank you. Of course, the 20-year vision is a vision that you share with not just yourself, but with your community and with other members of your board who developed this and developed the ideas of where you're going to get the resources and how you're going to make it work. The things we need to look at is infilling a lot of these developments that were half-done, half-baked, that didn't complete their growth. We need to look at our commercial infill, some of the areas that we have vacant in our commercial areas. We have park and infrastructure needs that we need to look to. We're currently finishing the seventh bridge on County Road 305 and looking forward that we're going to have to widen that road and the existing bridges did not cut it. We're excited about these changes. We also are looking at beach re-nourishment to saving that beach and again, to make Flagler County a great place to not just visit, but to live. Thank you.
Question number nine, we now go into the lightning round. And each of the candidates will get one minute to address this. First one up will be Frank Meeker. Would you be willing to dedicate a portion of the millage rate or sales tax exclusively to economic development? Why or why not, Frank Meeker?
Well, I seem to remember that we asked that question a few years back and it didn't fare so well. I don't think it fared so well because I don't think we did a very good job of selling it. So if we're going to do it, it needs to be taken out as a referendum and that's going to be an issue for the people to decide.
All right, very good. Next up here, Denise Calderwood, your answer to question nine.
Yes, I would because the people have told me that they are willing to do something different and creative. They just need to know what that money is going to be used for. Our property values have increased, but yet we're still going back with the rollback rate telling people that is a tax reduction. In reality, it's not. It's a tax increase. But we're keeping...
First of all, I believe it was not on the referendum. There was an intent to put it on the referendum, but it was withdrawn because there appeared to be a view from the residents that they were not willing to do that. I would not ever support any tax increase that was not phased through a referendum. So we would definitely have to go to a referendum. But before we even start talking about a millage increase, we need to talk about where are we trying to get to? What are the metrics? What are the measures? What do we think it's going to look like? What decisions? How are we going to use the money? So when we go, let's have all the answers and then let's go and ask the residents if they agree. Other communities have done it and they've gotten good results. Some communities have done it and they failed. The difference is the plan. It's not the idea, it's the plan and the ability to execute that plan.
And finally, question number nine for Nate McLaughlin. I'll read it again. Oh, you got it? Okay. There you go. All right, I'll read it again. Would you be willing to dedicate a portion of the millage rate or sales tax exclusively to economic development? Why or why not?
Well, we currently fund our economic development plans out of the millage or what you might call your general tax fund. When those dollars come in, a portion of it does go. But as far as exclusively, that would really have to be out, just like the ASL dollars, environmentally sensitive land, those referendums, that would be decided by the community in a referendum. But we do, we are excited about the economic development program that we have. We have adopted the seven pillars along with the state. We have partnered with the state. We are getting funding and cooperation with the state on many projects and we're excited about that relationship and the great help we have from good friends like Travis Hudson, who are friends to Flagler County. And we're working the program. I like all the ideas that folks have at the table tonight because that's exactly what we're doing. So what's proposed is what's happening and we're excited about that. And we are seeing changes. We are seeing growth. We are having companies come. As far as Czechoslovakia, the Avail Company is coming. There are over 500 jobs that they're going to create here. So we do have a great plan working. Thank you.
Closing comments. Each one of our candidates here will receive one minute to wrap it up. And Nate McLaughlin, take a breath, it's back to you. I got one minute first.
Okay. Here we go. The July issue, this is the elusive Thrive magazine that has been mentioned earlier. The July issue of Thrive magazine states that Flagler County is moving in the right direction. It is important that we continue with the efforts of our citizen-driven economic development and tourist development councils and the stabilization of our county budget and core services of fire and safety while keeping our taxes among the lowest in state Florida. It is an honor to have served you as a member of the Flagler County Commission for the last four years and to have helped form the foundation on which to build a community in which our children and our grandchildren can grow and prosper, a community that cares about our aging population and can provide the necessary services to maintain the quality of life that we've come to enjoy here. There is no doubt that Flagler County is a great place to work and live. No matter what the negative folks want to tell you, this is great and people are still coming. Real estate is booming. We are building a better community and I would appreciate your vote on November 4th for four more years of service. Thank you.
All right. One minute here. We move now for closing comments to Denise Calderwood.
Okay. I hope, four more years goes quickly then. I believe in open service. I believe in setting an example and being a role model and I have for several years. In 2000, I was recognized for my community service to Flagler County and it was a community effort. And I was one of two people in the nation that received the honor, one male and one female, for the efforts that we did collaboratively in Flagler County to put the youth center here. I'm fiscally conservative and I'm socially and environmentally friendly. And I'm the complete package. And I was raised in Flagler County and I know the issues. I believe in open and transparent management with an emphasis on collaboration and not adversity. I believe in preserving and protecting individual rights and I believe the rights of property owners to do what they need to do with their property in order to be a happy and healthy place to live. I believe in creating real jobs that exist and support local businesses first and then recruiting outside firms with incentive programs that we can tap into collectively together with Palm Coast, Benel, and Flagler Beach and all the rest of the cities that we have. I'm an advocate for Flagler County and I ensure that Flagler County has its fair share. And please vote for Denise Calderwood on November 4th or earlier.
Thank you, Denise Calderwood. And final closing comment with the last word for one minute, Howard Hawley.
So my opponent is running as a Republican candidate for this seat. And what he actually just said in his opening comments is that business experience really doesn't work in a government elected official setting. So I'm going to videotape that. I hope somebody recorded. I'm going to send it up to Governor Scott. I want to see what he has to say about that. Because we know that the experience in business can be brought to value in a political setting. I ran a billion-dollar business for Xerox. I manage over 6,000 people. I know how to make decisions. I know how to be accountable. I know how to collaborate. These are the types of things. I also know how to be transparent. So what I'm going to do is the same thing with you I did with the CEO of Xerox. I'm going to tell you what's working, what isn't working, and how we're going to close the gap. Okay? I'm not going to tell you everything is okay when the facts prove otherwise. I said earlier, it's a clear choice. It is, if you listen, a clear choice. If we keep electing the same people, we're going to get the same results. Thank you.
And one to, first of all, let's give all of these guys a round of applause. Frank, I'm sorry, you get a crazy counter there.
First of all, just to help Howard out, I've got the governor's phone number right here if you need it. Look, I was always taught that a measure of a man's worth is not what he's achieved for himself, but what he has given back to others. And for the last 30 years, I've been right here in Flagler County making quality of life improvements for you. I've been a roll-up-your-sleeves, get dirty, get sweaty, get busy, get-going guy. And I've been working and mentoring with your kids. I've been coaching your kids and your grandkids and I've been doing it right here for 30 years.